Okay, welcome everybody to Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, February the 6th. Again, this is a high republic meeting, so members of the republic attendees are welcome to join the meeting virtually or in person. Virtually using the Zoom link in the meeting agenda or the Zoom app with meeting ID 638-929-1060. There is also a phone number to join by phone directly. The meeting will also be available on Norton Cable Access. For future sessions, please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of meeting to Brian Carmichael, town staff, so they can be written in the record into the record in the event you are not able to attend and speak in person. So, without a way, I will dive into our agenda this evening. We do not have anything to discuss in terms of, well, in terms of planning more business and policies, we have one point that I just want to save till the end after we finish our discussions. We do have one bill that I signed earlier. If anybody would like to review the $6.25 bill for WBB Mason, you are welcome to do so, and we do not have minutes to approve at this time. Moving to the public hearing section of our agenda, two of our applications that are on this evening's agenda have requested continuances. Just to provide a bit of update, the Zero Mansfield Avenue project, which is a number three different special permits and three different site plan reviews, they are requesting continuance to our meeting on March the 12th. There have been some challenges with the, I will just say, challenges with the paperwork for the peer review account and invoicing. So, they should have that all sorted out now. Brian, thank you for all of the emails that you sent and all of the ones that you didn't send that you wanted to send. So hopefully we can get that sorted out and get that back on track. The other one that has asked for a continuance is Zero West Main Street. They asked for a continuance to our next available session, which is February the Some additional context that I shared with Brian earlier, and I just want to make sure the board is aware, I basically asked them, please come forward and present with an update or withdraw without prejudice as you, as they evaluate that project. Since they've had two continuances now without really any substantive discussion about what the project is, what is going on with the project since they heard from town council, or since we all heard from town council? So, this is a, let's just decide what we're doing and move on kind of moment, I think. If anybody has an objection, please let me know. Okay. With those two out of the way, the other, on our agenda is continuation of special permit 20475 for Zero there A Street. This has been continued a few different times, this is an application for four duplexes with a common driveway in the Wetland District. At our last meeting, we went into this with a number of different design level discussions about the site. So, I'll let the applicant that said up here with their, with their updates, and we'll go into it. And Brian, thank you for sharing on the screen as well.
My good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Eli Frey. I'm an attorney of that from Massachusetts, representing Mr. Wyatt Akia. Margaret Bacon is with me this evening. In our last meeting, you may recall that we had, initially came up, we got in this 70-foot elevation, and I paused for a while, spoke to my client and Margaret, and we decided that, I wasn't there three years ago, so I didn't have a lot of background, so I wanted to go back and look at the engineering, see what happened, because I couldn't understand how this could have been so missed. So, what I did was I spent a fair lot of time looking at the engineering from years ago, and I think you may be familiar with ANRAD and ORAD, which is a document that's filed with the Conservation Commission, which I guess, this is actually the ORAD. And this, this is the definitive plan as to the wetlands, the flood elevation, et cetera, et cetera. So when I looked at this, it started to make a lot more sense to me in this 70-foot issue. So if I can, I'm gonna paraphrase this, but Margaret's here for the text and stuff, I'm telling more of the story right now. On this plan, you'll note that it says edge of BVW, limit of 100-year floodplain, firm map, et cetera, et cetera. Zone A, so when I met with John Thomas, the conservation agent, he confirmed to, what I understood that zone A was, there was no flood elevation laid out for that particular property. So, what they did is they went out and they did the mean annual high water elevation, which is 61.9, and the floodplain elevation for this site is 63 feet. And you may say to yourself, wow, that's a long way from 70 feet. And the fundamental reason in meeting with Mr. Thomas is that this site is extremely unique with the Meadowbrook Riverway and has a spillway here. The spillway is roughly 61.2, roughly 61.2 feet. So there's a natural draining of this site. When I met with Mr. Thomas, he even confirmed that this past fall, which I think we can all state, and I know it's a couple of people, not many older than me here, but this was the most rain I've ever seen in my lifetime. That 500-year storm in September in North Attleboro wiped out North Attleboro. I had two properties that got wiped out. This particular site, there was no meaningful rise in the water. The water, you know, absent Noah's Ark is not going to go above 63 feet. So unlike the, and believe me, I respect the bylaw, and Margaret can speak to the bylaw, this bylaw is based on data that is from 1929. This bylaw is in the process of being rewritten in Norton right now.
All of our bylaws are, so that's not necessarily unique to this one.
Oh, correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. I know one of my professors in law school, Mark Robowski, is assisting the town, great guy, great friend of mine, he's working on that now and trying to update because things have changed. So, if, if the concern, which is a legitimate concern, was, hey, we don't want you to build below the 70-foot area because of the flood issue, I think the site-specific information that we're looking at here today demonstrates that that's not even feasible, because we're going to be, two of the properties are over 70, and the other two were like 69, 1, et cetera, 68, 8, and change. So we're not even close, like five to six feet of vertical water, where the water can't build up because of the spillway. And I do think that that is an extremely unique situation. And if I can, I want to just give a quick hypothetical, because when I was sitting thinking about this, I said, you know, it's ironic, there's a 70-foot threshold in bylaw, and if we had come here and everything fit at 70 feet, one inch, we would not need a special permit, because we would be above the 70 feet. We're here building not an inch above a regulated floodplain, but we're six, six to seven feet above the actual floodplain. So that issue, I hope addresses your concerns, that there's no issue here with the floodplain. That's something that John Thomas, I don't know if it was shared with you, he-
It's actually right up on the screen, right there.
There you go. So he addresses that issue, I think-
If you need it, I might give you an summary.
Well, I think he says, "As it pertains to the wetland boundaries and flood elevation near the project, citing these resource areas, were field confirmed and later issued through an order condition, et cetera, et cetera, and it was 60," what does it say, 60? Yeah, it was field confirmed, but it's 63 feet. This is the number, this was the order, the actual order, the ORAD. So, if, I hope that addresses that. There was a concern regarding the storm water management letter, which was also provided from Brennan, I think it was Brennan. So, we're here tonight, and Margaret can speak to additional issues that you may have regarding the floodplain issue. She did an immense amount of work on the historical, how we got from 29 to 88 to mean sea level, a lot of convoluted information, but in my meeting with Mr. Thomas, in my experience, that's the site-specific information, that's where the floodplain is, and fortunately, we have a spillway that's going to maintain that feature. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
There is a vast difference between an issue with flooding and a protection of the wetlands. The Wetland Protection District addresses flooding. It also addresses depletion and/or pollution of our natural resources.
Yeah.
So that is my concern with the Wetland Protection District, not flooding. The stormwater report, I want the peer review, which we still don't have, I would like that to make, ensure we don't have any issues with flooding, because that is part of this.
I'm sorry, that was pre-provided, I'm sorry.
Or it's the fourth document in my-
In where?
In my folder, it's the PGB engineering, the one I sent out today.
Just via email at 4 o'clock today?
Yeah.
I know, I-
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would address those concerns, and I respect your concerns-
Yeah.
And I know that, again-
So here's my thing-
Yes.
Let me finish if you don't mind, please. So, your client went to conservation and said you wanted to minimally, minimalistically develop this site in such a way to preserve and protect it. I have said to your applicant, "The bylaws by right allow you to build single-family houses. You are asking for a special permit to waive the requirements under the Wetland Protection District, which only allows you to build by right a single-family residence. You want to build duplexes in a Wetland Protection District that is not minimalistically protecting or preserving the environment. If you choose to do that, build a single-family house, and we'll approve the special permit for the common driveway."
I respect your position, and I'm not an engineer. Again, I wasn't there three years ago, I'm here now. I've spoken to Margaret many times, I've spoken to Craig, and I don't think it's a black and white issue, this is minimalistic decision, this is a very large site, and that was his goal-
But you can agree there's a difference between four single-family homes and four duplexes, correct?
With immense respect, and I'm not looking for trouble here from anyone, I hope you appreciate that.
I do.
Four single families with the same foundation mega mansions that people build today would be allowed as a matter of right.
Right, and you don't need my-
Yeah, and you know what, that's-
I'm here to enforce and protect-
Yeah, yeah.
What the town tells us to do.
And I'm just trying to be honest with you about a potential loophole that I think is odd, for lack of a better word.
There's no way that even if we redo the bylaws, we are not redoing that overlay. It will always be in the Wetland Protection District, always.
So, okay.
And I can't comment on it.
Okay. So, understanding, or to your point, that the stormwater isn't, is in the drop box and has been peer reviewed-
Thank you.
So understand that due to the timing, you may not have a chance to go, to go through it, but that has been completed.
Good, thank you, I do appreciate that.
And I think your position on single-family versus duplex, I think Mr. Frey's very clear, so.
I think I'm very clear.
Yes, I think we're all very clear with each other on that point.
Yes.
I understand. Can we clear one thing up quick, though?
Yes.
The document I'm looking at is from October 16th, is that the correct one?
Yes.
So, we just didn't have it? We've had it since October 16th?
No, conservation has since October.
Right.
But we haven't had the reason to have a peer review for stormwater since we have the stormwater in our folder, but-
So, yes, it's the correct document-
I'm looking at the right one.
But we didn't have it before, so yes. So, Mr. Frey, did you want?
Margaret, did you want to add something?
Well, I guess just one thing, too. And sort of make a plan here. This is just an overview. So, I know initially, the, this common driveway pretty much went down the center of this lot, and so we did have a design pretty much done for that scenario, but going through the Conservation Commission process, we did change the whole design and all the stormwater and moved that common driveway at least 80 feet, as far north as we could, to keep it away from the wetland. So, efforts were made to, to help, you know, minimize impacts and to stay away from the wetland as far as we could.
I understand that. Unfortunately, it also put you more within the Wetland Protection District, which falls under our jurisdiction.
For the buildings, you mean?
Yes.
How does it put us more when these buildings were down here?
Because you originally, on your prior, only two of your sites were below 70 feet. Now three of your lots are below 70 feet elevation.
Well, you know, and I, I can't, I did a lot of research on this, this mean sea level at 70, and come to find out-
I have no control over it, it's an overlay that's there.
No, 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 but I see where, I see where it comes from now. So in the regulations, it talks about the, the mean sea level and then how it equates to the USGS survey. So if you look at the old quadruple maps back in, I think I looked at one that was 64, and then right on that quadruple map, you can see that elevation 70, and then they, they talked about that, the mean sea level equaled the NAVD of 29. So once I saw that, then I'll say, okay, now I can, I've got a conversion. So then I can convert that datum of 29 and convert it into, what we have it on is NAVD 88. And I do have a-
I'm sorry, can you break down the acronyms a little bit for me?
Jibberish, it's all jibberish to us, I have no idea what you're saying.
Trust me, I, I'm an engineer, and it took me a long time to understand this, too, because this is a survey. So, you have these vertical dums, so everybody tries, you know, for a plan like this, now everything's on 88 datum in Massachusetts, so that we're all, all the different plans are on the same elevation base.
Margaret, that's, 88, you mean 1988, correct?
Yeah, it's called the NAVD 88.
1988, yeah.
And so everybody adopted the same topographical map in 1988 and said, we're fine now.
This is the elevation, and it's a little, it's a little different than the one that was previous, which was 1929, and there's a difference of about a foot, maybe a foot and a half. And so what I did, I'm gonna use that, so, yeah, I did from right here. So what I did, just for illustration purposes, so this, this yellow here, is that's at elevation 70, okay? And so everything this way is under that 70. But if I convert this 70 to the, the NAVD 29 datum, that's in the regulations, and then it bumps it down about a foot, foot and a half, which would be this, I had it at 69. So, you know, we're kind of trying to compare apples with oranges, and it's just, it's very confusing, and it took me quite a while to figure out what was going on here. But yeah, so we're trying to convert mean sea level into the dums we have today when, it's not there.
And the overlay district was made in-
I bet you, I bet you-
Seventies?
It had to have been.
So before the change?
Yeah, it had to have been, using, using the old quadruple, and that's what everybody used. So, but our plans are based on the updated 88.
But you've provided us with plans that I just looked at this afternoon, where lots three, two, and one, the, the footprint of the building itself falls below, at some point, 70 feet elevation.
70 feet elevation based on the NAVD 88.
Which is the only one that we have to this-
Well, according to your regs, it, you're, the, it's the, the mean sea level 70 of the 1929 datum.
So-
Which requires a conversion.
So-
So I'm just trying to compare, get them all on the same.
So, I'm gonna go back to, so are you, are you suggesting that we grandfather it all metric in to allow this above 70, or are you just trying to provide context in that we're really close to 70 and it's really just a, or we're really close to what the bylaw's original intent was? You're not asking for us to quote-unquote grandfather that status, you're just trying to-
No, I think, I think, and I don't want to speak for Margaret, I think Margaret's purpose in this portion of the meeting is to establish that if you use your bylaw and you make the correct conversion, this is the correct line, not 70, because you have to convert it mathematically. That's the math you've done.
Correct.
Okay, that's the purpose of that. And I'm gonna grant you, this, this property is still not in that area.
Okay.
That's Margaret's position. My position was a little different, that, and again, I may have been mistaken, I was very concerned with the flooding, floodplain issue, and I did spend a lot of time on that, and that line is way out here.
Okay, so, so it's, okay.
So the blue line represents a correct math line.
The blue line is what should be the wetland buffer, is that what you're saying?
The blue line should correlate with your-
That's, that sea level-
Your regulations, yes, the mean sea level.
As opposed to whatever number 70 originally appeared on the map?
Correct.
Okay.
And on your current plans.
So, but, yes.
Right.
So, but regardless of that, you still have one building that's within that zone.
Correct.
But the additional context and mitigating factor is that spillway and the drainage that you feel-
Is extraordinarily unique to that site, and having been there during the storms is, is-
Okay.
And having seen water rise everywhere else, it's, it's a unique situation.
I apologize if we took you down an engineering rabbit hole with that. I'm not sure if you enjoyed it or not.
It took me hours to try to, to figure out what was going on here, and I do have some documentation that talks about how, you know, years ago, you know, but that 1929 datum being used as mean sea level is no longer used anymore, discontinued, and discontinued for a while.
Okay.
But that's where it came from in the regulations.
Okay.
Do you know how old our overlay is?
Do I?
It's out of the GIS map, so I can't see it.
You mean, it would be on the GIS map, you're saying?
No, the, for some reason, Wetland Protection is not. It is an overlay, but it is not built into the GIS map for some reason.
Okay, anyway, it's okay.
Are you talking about the one of the bylaw core?
Yes, so it gives the boundaries literally line by line for each district. It's called an overlay, but it's not built into the, the map.
I know our conservation director had recently drawn what it is, but it hasn't been put onto the GIS, so.
Can we get, can we get a copy of that to verify against this?
Yes, but to a point, they're asking for a waiver from it regardless.
Yes.
So, and my feeling would be that the technicality aspect of 70 feet versus 68 feet, when they're already asking for a waiver for the other building, if that's gonna move the needle for somebody, then sure, we can look at it. I don't think that's something that's gonna move the needle on how somebody feels about this project. If somebody feels differently, please speak up. That would be my-
That's fair.
Yeah. Okay. So do we have any additional questions on the Wetland Protection, what the number 70 actually means, et cetera? Or are there any other aspects that we wanted to discuss?
It means nothing. Right? That's what we're saying.
They're asking for a waiver from it.
So there's multiple waivers, then it's the waiver for that, then waiver for common driveway length?
It's part of the special permit.
Yeah.
It's the, they're asking for a special permit because they're going below that.
And there's a waiver for a common driveway length, like-
That's just a big part of the special permit, yeah.
That's not something we have to vote on individually?
We should.
My recollection, you'll see with Amy last time, was that there was two votes that would be required, a vote for the common drive and a vote on the special permit for the waiver.
That would be, yes, I would also recommend two individual votes.
That matches what I have in my notes from the meeting.
So, before we get to that point, I was gonna ask if we had additional questions about, about the site, about anything else that we discussed as it relates to this project. Steve, I saw your hand go up.
Well, I was gonna say, do we also have to vote for special permits for the duplexes themselves also?
Correct, that's part two, correct.
Like all individually? All right. Do you want me to get into my thing at this point, or?
Yeah, I was, I'll say, I'll answer you, it, I have never been told to, that doing too many individual votes is a problem, so that is usually the direction I lean, regardless of how much time I feel like it wastes, having consecutive votes, consecutive vote. Yeah, no, I think, I don't know if it makes sense to pull up, I think, your, your question to the applicant was whether they considered looking at the lot, and this would obviously be far away from the plans that we've been looking at and talking about, what, whether you looked at it, whether you started evaluating this in any kind of a cluster approach or
I'd have to speak to Sam about that, I never had that conversation. Do you consider a cluster approach?
I don't, I don't think you would gain much, because, let me just get that over.
Yeah, the idea of a cluster is to, I mean, you're able to get, get higher density in a specific part of the lot and set the rest of the lot aside. That's the short version.
So part B is, is no problem for us, because we're setting aside substantially of land already.
So, so back to that, I don't know how much we gain there because, because of the buffer zone and things like that, so, and then, and on this side of the roadway, we're not building anything, so-
You're not building on the railroad tracks?
No, the only way to do a cluster or to, to, you know, you'd have to probably come down here more, and then, you know, then you're getting closer to the, the buffer zone and the wetlands, you know, here, we tried to-
Okay.
I think though, to your point-
Tim, if it's possible, could we put my picture up there, is that possible?
Yes, I should be able to do that if I can work technology.
You'd have to, Tim, I don't have the email.
Yes, and this is, where am I going? Sorry.
There are a couple of reasons of this, is, one, if, if we are to deny this project, we have to provide you with an alternative at least, or assume that there is a reasonable alternative that you guys are not taking, and also, if this project does get denied, I think you guys deserve some sort of alternative. So, I drew up what I think is a better concept in my mind, it still gives you eight units. You know, if, if it's not duplexes, that's fine, you know, that's lower part, but it's still four buildings.
Yeah.
But doing it as a cluster development gives a lot more land to the town, you can provide a lot more easements, and the, the lot sizes would provide you guys with tax breaks.
Okay, so this is, I would say, this is Steve's concept, I think, a lot of members who have said they're more comfortable with single-family, so I'm not sure how-
I want less development here.
Yeah.
This would, I mean, it'd be the same building, whether it's a duplex or a single-family, that's another part of it, but this would still move the buildings tighter to the road, closer together, provide more land. That's an overlay on top of the old plan to show the difference of where things are positioned, but-
Your buildings are front left, top left?
Well, the, the big block all the way to the side is the retention pond, and then there's four purple buildings.
So, it is a concept that Steve has put together, so, I would view it as, I think-
Isn't that kind of what we have? He stated that they're closer to the road.
They're closer to the road and closer to each other. It, it fixes the idea of the frontage thing, the anomaly, I guess you, we could call it. It provides better access around, there's a slightly larger cul-de-sac, but, you know, access to, I guess, the 30 acres of- There's a slightly larger cul-de-sac, but, you know, access to, I guess, the thirty acres of river outback would be, would be great, a way for the public to actually get there.
If I may.
So it's.
I, I'm, I'm very colorblind, so that first long building?
That first long thing is the retention pond.
Okay, all right.
Not a long. I had the same question.
So square a question, you know what I mean?
I had the same exact question.
Okay, now, now I got you.
So, yeah, so it's food for thought, from Steve's perspective.
No, and I, I appreciate what you did from an engineering point of view. When I, when I do these jobs, you gotta think three D, because it's not only the roadway and trying to get all the houses to fit, then you gotta get all the drainage and the stormwater standards to work. And it's not just building one detention pond, then, then you have to do recharge, and then you gotta get the, all the water to there. And then you got the septics, and then it all depends upon the individual perks, you know. The, the septics in Title V have all sorts of requirements. I gotta be so far away from the, the road, so far away from the house, and so far up depending upon the groundwater, and then that affects grading, and so you have all these.
Sure.
Competing little things going on, and then you got the Conservation Commission wants you to do this, and so you. So eventually, I, and we did, we changed this quite a bit from our original design, and got it up there. But I, and, and we did talk about moving, moving the road back a little, and I think the most we could do it was fifty feet. But when we did that, the A and R plan changed, and so we left the road there. So we, we thought of all that stuff, and it does a lot of things, you know, a lot of moving parts, a lot of moving parts.
One of the, one of the fun things of having an, an elected board is we all have different opinions, we all have different thoughts, so. Thank you, Steve.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. I do see a number of additional attendees in the Zoom meeting, so I wanna just do another call around to see if any members of the board have additional questions for the applicants based on what they presented this evening or anything else related to the site plan that we've discussed. Otherwise, I'll go to anybody joining us virtually in the meeting. Okay, I'm not seeing anything here. So I'll see, I'll ask if anybody who's joining, members of the public who've joined the virtual meeting would like to speak. Please raise your virtual hand in the Zoom meeting, and I will call on you and ask you to direct your questions to the board. And if we can answer them, we will. If we need assistance from the applicant, we will take that down and ask them in a sidebar to get the answer that you want. So I'm just gonna ramble here in case anybody needs to find their mute button or find the reactions function in the Zoom meeting. And if I see anything pop up, I'll, I'll cut in here, but I'm not seeing anybody, anybody jumped on the stick here, so. If there's no other questions for the board, I'll ask Mr. Bray, is there anything else that you wanted to share with the board at this time?
I would just say in summation, I appreciate the board's effort, and I go to a lot of towns, and they're not always as diligent in the discussions and their work, so I do appreciate that. I do believe that this is a unique site. I do believe that the Conservation Commission will properly protect the weather issues as we have started with the Conservation Department. And I would ask the board to consider voting affirmatively on both the common drive and separately on the duplex.
Okay. And just to be ultra-clear, you are comfortable with us closing the public hearing?
At this, yes.
Okay, I always wanna make sure.
Understood.
Especially when you're working with the board, so you don't wanna close it in case you have to change something, and then we have to go back and renotice and do this whole shebang all over again, so.
Understood.
Okay. Anybody have anything further at this time? From members of the board here? If we have nothing further for the applicant, the applicant is open to us closing the public hearing. If there's anything else that we need before we do that, I ask that we lay that out. Otherwise, I look for a motion to close the public hearing and proceed.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, Alan and Wayne. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the public hearing?
Just one thing, do we have Jim tonight?
We do not have Jim.
So we add down one member?
Correct.
Just so the applicant knows that.
That, yes.
Yeah, he had mentioned he would be here. He thought he'd be, excuse me.
He believed he would, yes, but he, as he is now. We did have a, a personal matter to deal with.
Understood.
Over the last few weeks. So.
So we need a vote, just for.
We can choose to close the public, thank you, I'll hold on taking a vote on closing the public hearing. And if you would like us to close the public hearing and move to a vote in our, at our next session, we can do that.
I would prefer that. Yes, yes, sure.
Does anybody have any opposition to that?
No.
No.
Okay. So the motion to close the public hearing still stands? Does anybody want to make any further discussion on that motion? Okay, so motion is to close the public hearing, and we will take a vote virtually at our next session. So Eric, I will start with you.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, so the public hearing is closed, and we will look to vote at our next session, assuming that Jim is able to complete his Mulla requirements and join us. But as the public hearing is closed, you're certainly welcome to attend, but you can feel free to leave your voices at home.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want motions to continue the other hearings that we're supposed to have?
Um, did we not actually, we did not actually motion.
We did actually.
I just said to him.
We just, yes.
So that's probably, that's why I am happy that I am not a one-person board, thank you.
Can I ask something real quick?
Yes.
Would the applicant like the work I've done to review by chance?
Very much.
I think, yeah, send it to Brian, then you can.
An extra seven.
Follow along.
Brian, give the word to me?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we've closed public hearing for zero, zero A Street, so we do not need to continue that because the public hearing is closed, but we can discuss it at our next session. Would need motions to continue the other two applications.
Motion to continue SPR two zero one zero zero, two zero one zero three, and two zero one zero six, SP one nine nine two eight, one nine nine three five, and two zero one zero seven.
Seconded.
Thank you for the motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions? I realized everyone was here, so I could do that. Okay, and anything?
Yeah, motion to continue SPR dash one to February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Thank you, Eric and Laura. Any further discussion on the motion to continue, zero was made? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye, all so.
Sorry. Okay, so that is continued to February the twenty-seventh. So, the last item that I wanted to circle back to was just in terms of planning board business and policies. So Brian, I'll turn this over to you, just in terms of what you wanted to share, if you want me to introduce it a little bit, or?
Yeah, I think it'd be better, sure, you introduce.
So, yeah, so Brian, I talked, was it this week, last week? Last week. I think we all know that Brian has been trying to do multiple jobs over the past long period of time. So, I've encouraged Brian, and I believe that others in the office have also been trying to encourage you recently.
Yes.
To dial back a little bit in terms of how much he is taking on. So, that is happening, and I'm supporting him in that. I've also suggested that we do what we can to work with town managers to get him, if there is help that would actually ease his workload, then we should try to get that.
We have asked multiple times already.
It has been asked. The last time that it was asked, then we had a planner coming in, and then it just kind of went, well, I guess that's not an issue anymore.
I thought we asked again.
It has been re-asked, and.
I've approached it with the select board chair as well, who has reached out to the town manager, and apparently there is a option, or there is an entity that does rent a planner.
I think, I believe that they tried that, and they had a six-month wait, or something like that?
There's nothing available in our area.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not sure, rent a planner is probably not the correct term.
Yeah, but it's for all intents and purposes, it's a temporary placement. It's usually retired planners who are not looking to get into something full-time.
Yes, no, my, my Band-Aid suggestion was to try and get somebody just to help with the administrative side aspects of what Brian is working on from veteran services or anywhere to. Can they do all of the planning stuff? No, do they need to? No. So, that has been suggested, but I'll just say, Brian, we appreciate all the things that you do. Thank you.
If you wanna go on strike, I'll stand and then hold on strike.
If I go on strike, you guys are gonna.
We're screwed, no, please don't go on strike.
But yes, so I would just say that I think that we're all agreed that Brian has been doing a lot of things, and yes. If there is anything that we feel as we work through the next period, where we want to say, Brian, this doesn't matter, unless it actually, unless Mike says it matters, you can de-prioritize this, prioritize this instead, or something like that, I think, let's just bring it up and share.
Can we try to get on a select board agenda, like all of us go virtually? Like what else could we do to, you know what I'm saying?
Um.
Talk with the ZBA and you guys both do it, that sort of thing?
Just bombard a meeting?
So basically just be a squeaky wheel, is that what you're suggesting?
We work through Jim's lottery, so.
It's not a bad idea.
I mean, there's a difference between contacting them, saying something, and being agenda.
Yeah, at this point, I'm going on two years, and I've worked with a planner for seven months in my two-year tenure. We're flying blind, literally, and some people have never had a planner.
Couple months, yeah.
Train professionals.
What?
I mean, at this point, I'm like, what does it take to become one, and I'll just, you know, get it, have a third or fourth job?
There's a whole degree thing, yeah.
I can make that up.
Okay, so in terms of the appropriate avenue for that, would that be an email from me to Kevin?
Yeah, yeah, just ask to get on the agenda.
Yeah. And I'll give them an out and say, please feel free to. Let's see, actually, I should say, do we have any specific conflicts that we wanna work around based on this? Or do you want me just to see what they say and then address that in a later date?
Yeah, at, at the end of the day, all they can really do is apply more pressure on the person who reports to them, and that's.
Yes, which, who I, yes.
Yeah, but.
Who I generally assume is acting in good faith in these types of things, so.
But maybe we need to start thinking outside the box and maybe expand the salary range of the position that we're offering to entice more candidates. I don't know what the answer is, and I know we're in a tough budget situation, but this is an untenable situation.
I mean, in theory, we haven't paid a planner for nine months, so there's money there.
Yeah, we're gonna save all kinds, yeah, saving salaries, saving insurance, benefits.
Yes, that was the, that was the point I gave Brian when talking about getting some temporary help. Like, there shouldn't be a budget item that you're not using, so you should be able to figure something out. But asking for an official select board agenda item action is probably not a bad idea. So I will make that a to-do for myself. And if I don't put it into my phone, then I won't remember that it's a to-do, so that's what I'm doing right now. So. So let me schedule that, okay. Brian, is there anything else that you wanted to add there? Did I?
Um, I know that next meeting will be the twenty-seventh, however, some of us could be here for the thirteenth, in which we'll be talking with the zoning board.
By the, by law, recodification.
Right.
We, we're doing that virtually, right, or are we in person?
I mean, we might just do it virtually, 'cause no one really.
I'm fine, no, that's good, let's do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I just log on and listen just for the jokes?
The stories that last for ten minutes.
You don't wanna joke with Jim and Tom?
Okay, I think Tom was saying he might join virtually as well, so, just from province, but, okay. There's nothing else on our agenda this evening? Is there anything else that you want to share in the open session?
Everybody should go visit the dam.
Which one?
On the reservoir.
Yes. It's all nice and clean now.
It's nice and clean.
But yes. Okay, otherwise, anybody have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much, everybody, have a good night.